All right, at this time we'll call the Winona County Planning Commission meeting to order, and we'll start out with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time I'd like to remind everybody in the audience that our Fish and Secretary has reminded me that you should sign in on the guest registry there, so, because we're supposed to have all of this stuff documented. And if you do speak, you have to give your name and address, but we need a kind of checks and balances so we know who was here and who wasn't here, and all of that stuff. All right, at this point, we need approval of the agenda. Mark moved to approve the agenda, and Pat seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The agenda has been approved. All right, did everybody get a chance to skim the minutes? Or anybody get a chance to skim the minutes? Are there any corrections or additions?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Kelly moves to approve, and Steve seconded. Is there any further discussion on approval of the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes for the March 21st meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The minutes have been approved. Okay, at this time, we need staff report on docket PC 5-16-19-01.
Good evening. In regards to this request, I guess the first thing I'd like to point out is that it's two separate sections of the ordinance, so when it comes to taking action on this one, we would like or prefer that you deal with each segment under a separate motion. The two requests, the first is to allow a new dwelling to be located in the Shoreland District. The proposed building site is located within 300 feet of public waters. Anytime you construct a new dwelling within the 300 feet, it requires a conditional use permit. The setback is 100 feet for all structures from that water body. The second is, since this proposal involves a new building site to split an existing acreage up, the new building site would be 12 and a half acres, so it does need the conditional use permit to allow a new dwelling that's less than 40 in the ag district. Diagram illustrates this, it was cut off a little bit, but actually there is three parcel numbers because this is a section line. Here's section 35 and 36. And anytime you have a section line, it's something that's not the choosing of a property owner, but since when you have acreage that goes into a different section, the historical practice was that they would assign separate and individual parcel numbers to the remnant of the acreage. So actually, there's several parcels there. The orange boundary is roughly the approximate split that would occur to contain the existing dwelling and the existing buildings, and from my estimate, that would be approximately five acres. Properties located along Enterprise Drive, which kind of has a serpentine fashion because of the terrain and the creek that it follows and goes way back up to Lewiston. The new parcel in which they wish to homestead would be approximately 12 and 3/4 of an acre. There is an existing field entrance that's located north of the existing drive, and the applicants wish to improve that, to serve that as an access to a new residential dwelling and attached garage. Just a few photos of the area. This is view looking to the west, this is the township road. The driveway that they would use, I believe, is right in this area. This is a view looking to the south on the property. A view standing about the area where the new driveway would come, we're looking back to the east, and that's showing the existing buildings of the existing property. This is roughly an overview looking to the north with a proposed building site somewhere in this vicinity, and the stream directly south of that and looking to the north. As I mentioned, the tributary of Rush is a public waters. This insert that's in your staff report, as well as one of the mapping exhibits, is trying to illustrate these dark shaded river areas as public waters. After sending notice and information to the DNR office, that would be the Lake City, Bill Huber, the area hydrologist, he looked at it with fisheries, and they did respond back and gave us some additional information. They're the ones that put us on clue that there was a previous deed easement that the previous property owner entered in with the Minnesota DNR for a fishing or angling easement. And essentially what that is, I believe it's 66 feet, and that would be from top of bank, is what they would observe as kind of an easement for DNR access, as well as for fishing. People that are going along that stream. The red line is approximately representing 100 feet from top of bank, showing what the setback is. So in staff's analysis, that's in the staff report and some of the findings, the driveway can't be any further north than this yellow line. It would have to be most likely in between these, and structures that are constructed would have to be south of the red line. This is a map of the current firm, flood insurance rate map, or FEMA floodplain map. And this was the one that's in 1984. It's still effective. The red arrows that you're going to see on the next few exhibits are an approximate area according to the site plan that was originally submitted of where they would be building. So, you know, an initial assessment of this shows that they're pretty close to being in a mapped floodplain area with a structure. I'm going to show you what the new map looks like, and we are entitled to use the best information, which the DNR has new floodplain maps that are working its way through. We can use that. But I want to be very clear, as a disclaimer, is that even though the regulatory authorities, such as in planning and zoning, can use the new data, there still might be some problems with the property owner applicant, especially from mortgage and banking, because they're compelled to use these old maps unless they're proven otherwise. So that's the disclaimer that I, as staff, we want to make very clear, is that it's, according to the current old effective map, it's right on the line. Now, this is the new map, which will, is working its way through an approval process. And what's really nice about this is not only are the boundaries refined to kind of show now they're really matching up with the topography and the contour lines, but they also have the 100-year flood, base flood elevations that have been put on there. So we can safely say that right about at this point where the house would be, if they ever had a 100-year flooding event, we would believe that to hit everything at 1,016.22 is where that would flood out to. So anybody building, we want to make sure, you know, they're not going to change the grade, they're not going to cut, they're not going to inadvertently put themselves back into the floodplain.
Excuse me, can we go back to the previous slide just to get a comparison of the two? Go back a couple times?
Do this.
Yeah, that helps.
So the boundary has kind of been somewhat altered.
Thank you.
Again, one more piece of information. I looked at the LiDAR for Utica Township, and the yellow lines are 10 foot. You can see that first one is about 10, 30. This one down lower is, you know, then there's about 20 foot. So you can see that there's a considerable drop in elevation or topography from where their house is. And when you see the video, you'll kind of put that together too. Those brown hatch lines, those are two foot increments. So every time you see either one of the brown or the yellow, that's showing us that there's a change in elevation of at least two feet. Prime soils, the house would be on an area, I think it's a type 3. This is a type 3 and a type 2, so by definition, it was prime. But when we look at the acreage, and they proposed on splitting the parcel approximately in this manner, when I calculate out the prime soils of the 12 and a half acres compared to what's left, there's one little notch down here that's got some prime. It would be roughly 33% of that proposed new parcel would meet prime.
Does that include in the driveway?
No. No, I tried to basically stay back roughly 30 feet from the road when I snapped those measurements. Also, since, talked a little bit about the elevation change and the topography, and since we've got a floodplain and a stream, because it's got those traits or characteristics, a parcel like that in this setting actually then models out as a high probability for archaeological resources. So it is in that district. So if there is a conditional approval given, the county will have to commission a Phase 1 archaeological study for that site.
Eric, who pays for that?
County.
Really?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there's some background with that when we went through the zoning ordinance revisions.
Do you have any idea how much those generally run?
Typically 750 to $1,000. And it's conducted by the UW La Crosse Archaeological Department.
Can anybody do that, have that done?
I mean, can anybody have their property looked at? Sure. In fact, it's mandated for any state or federal project. But I think when we went through the zoning ordinance process, with especially the bluff lands, we heard quite a bit of information about Native Americans and the rich resources that we have. And there was a conscious decision and approval by the county board at that time that, you know, if you have a project that's going to either disturb or be such and such size and be located in that area, that's something that the county had decided that we were going to do and not pass that cost down to the proposer at that time.
Eric, in the event, in the event that artifacts are found, then what?
Well, it just depends on how significant. You know, you could find, you know, tools or rocks or arrowheads or pottery shards, but that would maybe warrant a further investigation. But if you find something then that, say you were on a village or a burial site, then it might arise to a higher level where we might want to, you know, see what the limits of that are and see, you know, what, you know, the mitigating factors are with it.
Thank you.
Eric, does this just on the building site, or is this the whole part?
Just the building site. So at that, at a certain point, we'll need to stake out the four corners, and I believe they will be working within 100 feet of that, of the marked area that would be selected for approval. We're standing about roughly right about the building site. We are in section 35 of Utica Township, and this is in regards to the Mitch Walsh conditional use permit request. And this is to allow a residential dwelling on less than 40 acres to increase residential densities according to 5.542, and also to allow a new dwelling within the Shoreland zoning district since the building site would be within 300 feet. We're looking at directly below the indicated building site, approximately in this distance, in this hayfield on this upper ledge which overlooks kind of the stream corridor to the, directly below. This is somewhat looking in now in northern fashion. The building site would be served by a proposed driveway that would come in from the south, coming off of Enterprise Valley Drive. And you'd say right where the vehicle is parked off of the township road is, I believe, where an existing driveway is and that they would put an extension on. The applicant's proposed to split off the existing building site that is currently on this property, located at 20900 Enterprise Valley Drive. Previous property owner was Ed Peterson. You can see immediately to the south, the existing set of buildings, house, whatnot. Nearest neighbors located to the south. You can see in the screenshot. And then there's also neighbors that are flanking the acreage somewhat to the west from the site, located along Enterprise Valley Drive in that area. Current conditions show that there's alfalfa on this site. There is some cropland, the rest is kind of a stream corridor. Looking at the soils, roughly, I think there's 12 and 3/4 acre that would go along with this building site. And I'm looking at the soils of type 1, 2, and 3. Roughly 33% of this parcel consists of prime soil. So even though that the house would be located on a highly productive part, the parcel in its entirety would meet the ratio of not containing more than 40% according to that standard. And this would be a view looking to the east of a bluff corridor. The setback off of the stream is at least 100 feet according to Shoreland standards. Applicants have indicated preliminarily that that would be their intent is to exceed the 100-foot setback. And again, a view looking at the acreage in question. That should conclude the video footage for this application. Okay, any questions?
So it is a hayfield?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Eric, this easement to the DNR, is that in perpetuity, or?
Yes. We have a copy of it here. Actually, I don't really, but yeah, I believe it is in perpetuity.
Okay.
Eric, I had a question. There was reference to watercraft docking and enhancing recreational opportunities. How does that play into this?
That's standard Shoreland language. As you imagine, that language was crafted to serve all the lakes in the, you know, north of Brainerd and in between Duluth and International Falls.
It looked like the stream was a little wider there, but I didn't think it was really going to be that wide, but I just.
I don't know if it's navigable, maybe with a small canoe and a skilled person, but the other part of it is fishing. You know, since it is public waters, it's valued as a trout stream, and that's where probably the emphasis of the DNR comments would be.
Is that's an impaired water?
I believe so, yeah.
I think so.
In that same paragraph that Tru just referenced, it says there's already a well that is present on the parcel. Can you let us know what part of the parcel that may be?
Well, actually, maybe that's probably the best. My understanding is that the well, I got a diagram here too. The well is located on the, just north of that loop in between, between that house and that drive, right in that vicinity.
So there'd still need to be a septic system dug?
Correct, yep.
And typically, that's how deep?
Septic system's dependent on the soil borings that they'll have to do. The system that was put in for this property was installed in 2006, and they were able to go with a trench system. So they actually, that was a three-foot wide and roughly three feet deep trench, and they were able to go shallow. They did, I believe, do a compliance inspection in preparation of selling that because the point of sale would still require an inspection. And I believe, it's my understanding, that that did pass a compliance inspection.
Would the new dwelling have a basement?
That'd be a question for the applicant.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission members?
With a septic system intended for the new dwelling, would that have any, from zero to, major impact on that trout stream?
Not if it's properly designed and maintained. It should be negligible because the equation for a septic system is, first of all, the soil that's in question, two, it's the design factors, and three, it's the flow. But if it's taking into account that equation, in theory, if you have three feet of good soil, all the sewage affluent that's being discharged out of that trench system or acreage system or mound system, by the time it hits the good soil, which has been approved by the design, there should be no impacts to the groundwater, thus the surface water too. Because all the pathogens should have been broken down from all the research that UOM has done in conjunction with MPCA.
So Eric, can you tell us why it scored 168, with 200 being the least desirable in the development final composite?
Most of those colonies are going to have a real bad composite comprehensive score due to the fact that they're not immediately adjacent to a city limits. If it was in an area that didn't have farmland, and if an area that was immediately adjacent to cities, which would be the more logical place, that score is to maybe not assess a building site, but it was to look for more subdivisions. Where do you want your urban growth to occur by more densities? So, I mean, when we see, you know, we've been kind of torn as staff, and I think by the Planning Commission, to see that score. But it's a tool, there was a lot of work that went into it in the 90s that shows comprehensively, when everything's considered, is this an area that should be slated for development? And development means, in my mind, dozens of houses, or, you know, many more subdivision, you know, on a case-by-case basis. Unless you're, you know, within a quarter mile of a municipal or a subdivision, that score is going to be relatively, you know, bad as far as development purposes.
Harley?
If the septic system don't pass, what's the next step? Go to the mound system?
Which septic, the existing one?
If that one doesn't.
Yeah, you have to have two sites delineated on your plan. So there's always going to be a second or future reserve site. So the thought is that, say your first system fails after 30, 40, 50 years of use, that you have identical square footage on reserve to accommodate that.
Just in terms of slope, I actually had the opportunity to go out and visit the site last night for like watershed, rain, rainfall, you know, driveway, gas from automobiles. If it rains, that property, in my mind, it looks like it all goes to the creek. It looks like the slope of the land, if there was a significant rainfall, the water goes off that really sheer drop down to the creek. Am I correct in saying that?
Well, I mean, it's really ruling topography. When, in that video, if you've seen from all perspectives, you can see there's quite a few features that it's a really mirable scenic area because of the topography and the relief between the valley floor and the, kind of the bluffs on all sides, or hills on all sides, things like that.
Being that close to the trout stream, are there more compliance checks than normal?
There is some heightened requirements being in Shoreland. One, that if they do years and years down the road, they're, well, I mean, 96, they still give a break for septic system owners that were installed prior to 96. Then they're required to meet a two-foot separation on a compliance check of an existing system. For those after 96, or for anybody in the Shoreland, they still hold tight with the three-foot requirement that the septic meets that before they can pass a compliance inspection. In that number though, they also allow for settling. So actually, it comes down to 31 inches is what the threshold is for just about all the newer systems and anything in Shoreland.
So it's checked, but being that close, would there be sporadic checks on it just to make sure it's in compliance? How does?
No, I mean, by having a septic system, there's code requirements that you're supposed to maintain your septic system. It means it doesn't absolutely have to be pumped every three years, but every three years, your system should be assessed whether or not it's due for a pumping. And that's by a licensed service provider to look at your septic tank. And then what they do is they measure the scum and the sludge layers, and they do a visual inspection. If it meets certain threshold, they can say, you know, you're due for a septic pump.
Are there any areas in this, in Winona County now that are related to this or compatible or comparable?
Oh, yes, yeah, there's some really tough areas in this county.
And have compliance, those three-year checks been made, and who makes them, and etc., and that type of thing?
Well, they, yes, I mean, the city, like City of Winona and some of their neighborhoods that are in septic systems, they require every five years that they assess just to see if they are due for a pumping. And they're supposed to be sharing the records then with the City of Winona. We require it when we do permit reviews and things to that nature to see, you know, where are we at with certain requirements, especially building on or replacing, things like that.
Any further questions? Thank you, Eric.
Thanks, Eric.
At this time, I believe it's the applicant's turn to give, speak if he so desires about his project, proposed project. As you come forward, please state your name and address.
Mitch Walsh, 20687, County Road 33, Altura, Minnesota. So I'm proposing a new primary residence to be split off of the site. Like Eric said, it's under the 40% rule. You know, I like the area. To be honest, that's where my senior party was at. Just trying to stay in the area and get a decent site.
Okay, any other comments? Does anyone on the commission have a question for Mitch at this time? Mark?
On his application, he indicated it's not actively tilled land, but yet it's a hayfield. So it's obviously farmland, then?
It hasn't been fertilized, I don't know how many years.
So it is, it's farmland. It's good, tilled farmland that's currently a hay crop.
It's currently a hay crop, yes. I don't recall when they had last corn on it though, as well.
So Mitch, this is the house you're building for yourself and your family?
Yes.
Any other questions at this time?
Will there be a basement?
Um, to be honest, I like slab-on-grates, 'cause I don't like to have basement issues down the road ever.
What will you be doing with your current residence?
Probably placing it on the market.
And you have, you have a few splits there too, or?
Just one. I'm trying to stay out of the flood plain, of course.
Well, yeah, at this location, you are out of the flood plain, I'm pretty sure. All right, any, any other comments, or anyone have any questions for Mitch? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, we need a motion.
I'll move that we go into public.
I'll second it.
Uh, all right, Kelly moves, and Mark seconds the motion to begin the public hearing for docket, uh, whatever, PC 516-1901. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of opening the public hearing for docket PC 5-16-19-1, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion is carried, and the public hearing is now open. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak, please step forward, state your name and address, and say what you have to say.
Brian Markey, I live at 25 South Fremont Street. And I'll be purchasing the other half where all the standing buildings are now, and living there, so I guess I just wanted to come here and say that I have no problems with Mitch building the house there.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. For the second, okay, go ahead.
Hey, I'm Eli.
Uh, 2130, 21230, Enterprise Valley Drive. Is the existing building site a feedlot?
Eric?
Yes, if it is, uh, the building's in closure, and, uh, depends on the number of animal units as far as what the applicable setback would be.
Thanks.
Is it a reg, is it a registered feedlot with the county? I believe it was at one time, yeah. Well, is it, has, has it been kept up? Is it still registered? I'd have to go through that file to see. But if that's being split, that would be a question that the applicants will have to decide, because if it's over 10 animal units, there would be a 500-foot setback between the feedlot and the dwelling if the property's going off in a separate direction. If it's over 50 animal units, then there's, then that's a 1,000-foot setback applies. But if it's under 10, technically, there is no setback that is applied. It, uh, seems like the first time we've done an application where that information wasn't all provided. But, I mean, normally, there's the big bullseye circle on, screened on how many feet from the existing feedlot. And so I, I guess I'm just maybe getting, feel like I'm getting a mixed answer. Is, is there a feedlot there or not? We kinda oughta know what it is, if there is or not.
Kay, can you find that on the computer, or?
But there's, didn't appear to be livestock when I was out there. And if there was a registered feedlot, you would know. I mean, that would be on the county's record, right? Yeah.
For the second time? Anyone?
Well, I'm confused. So there, there's a new buyer for the existing structures? Is that what that gentleman just stood up and said? That he's purchasing those buildings? What is he gonna be doing? Is he gonna be farming?
No. Well, I mean, I guess I don't know for sure, but I would say no.
We, we better wait for Eric and see what he says. I think that will clear up some of the murkiness. Let's, let's continue with the public hearing. Okay, all right, for the second time, anyone wishing to speak on PC docket 5-16-19-01, please step forward and state your name and address.
I'm Wickram, 20818, Enterprise Valley Drive. I'm to the, I think, the north, I guess. Um, and you enjoyed most of my scenery. Uh, the only reason I'm here is 'cause we got a letter in the mail. The neighborhood started talking about it. I wasn't really even sure it sold. My concern would be the unknowns. I've heard, I don't know, maybe, uh, can you look that up? Several times tonight. My husband and I have 35 acres across the creek. Uh, we had a simple thing to get off the flood plain and drop our flood insurance, and it took an act of God, uh, dealing with the county to get that done. We hired a special person who came in. Luckily, we're done. Our house is elevated enough. My concern is the township road is very poorly maintained. We can barely get some of our cars through in the winter. Right now, there's what, four soft spots where your car can almost bottom out. I haven't heard a plan how they're gonna maintain that and the extra stuff. The two parcels, it's 17 and some odd acres. I wasn't even aware you could split that up. I thought you had to have more than that. And now somebody's living in a trailer down by there, so. I would just hope that whatever's decided is, um, equal across the board. Because I do have a neighbor who had said he had been turned down once to sell off 40 acres because of a feedlot. So it just seems like it's kind of like in and out, and who's on the board, and who's making a decision on how the law is interpreted. Thanks.
Thank you. What did you find, Eric?
Well, he's not submitted registrations in the last nine years. The last correspondence of the feedlot officer was in 2010. And he indicated that he had 10 feeders and five cows, or five drive cows, five jerseys, and five heifers.
So you're over 10 and under 50, then, right?
Right, yeah, it's well clear, and number one, so I'd probably come out around somewhere around 18 and 22 animal units back in 2010. I guess, uh, that's something we would need as far as information, as far as moving forward, if those two properties would be divided into separate ownership. Because that could be a setback issue if there was going to be over 10 animal units maintained on that site with separate ownership involved. Since he is the property owner of the property, he would be in control of those circumstances. Is the, so are you saying that the feedlot is active today, or it's not? It didn't appear there was much activity at all. But officially, don't, don't we have a, an on paper? I mean, 'cause some, we have plenty of people who keep their feedlots registered even though they have no intent of using them so that they're more valuable down the road. I mean, your property is worth more when it's? We would still have to review that point as far as issuing of developments or things. It kinda, kinda sounds like you're not saying that nobody's officially closed their regi- 'cause you can come in and say, "I'm done with this as a feedlot." And the applicant would have the authority to do that right now, if you're saying? Right? Yeah.
It doesn't make me.
Yeah.
There's no other feedlots within 1,000 feet, then, anywhere around?
Okay. Or not, because it's under Ed Peterson's name? Well, the applicant has the authority then, of course.
All right, um, for the third and final time, anyone wishing to speak to PC docket 5-16-19-01, please step forward, state your name and address, and say what you'd like to say. Seeing no movement, does someone wanna make a motion?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second. Okay, Cherie, move to close the public hearing. And?
Patrick.
Patrick seconded. All those in favor of closing the public hearing on docket number PC 5-16-19-01, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The public hearing is now closed. Counsel?
Uh, I just wanted to let, um, the planning committee know the draft findings were prepared, so that if you chose to, you could do it as a single motion. Do a group vote, and they, because there's a lot of overlap on some of the criteria, they were interplaying, so you could walk by this.
Yes, I think we understand that.
Eric had said earlier that it would take two motions, and that's not, but it was based on the draft.
Okay, does the planning commission understand that terminology? Okay.
So we take it all at one shot versus individual?
Correct.
Right, we don't have to go through it twice. For the shore, what is it, shoreland, and then the?
Shoreland is, uh, dwelling on.
Yeah. Okay, so we go to the, let's see, where do? Is there any discussion, first of all, before we go to the findings of fact? Are we timing on making a decision because we don't have the absolute information on the feedlot?
I don't think so.
I think so, because the applicant has the authority to shut the feedlot if he owns it. If there is a feedlot there.
Okay, Eric?
Recommendation may be to ask the petitioner what his intentions are with the barn and animals moving forward.
Okay, Mitch, you heard the?
So the barn is pretty poor shape, and it's probably gonna get torn down at some point. It's pretty disrepaired, so.
Okay.
So is your intention not to have animals, then? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, I wouldn't have any anymore.
Go on either place.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, Steve, you got a question, or? You're still dwelling.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of the times the applicant has been before us on his past properties. And the problems there was with water and the neighbor, and the two different, the one neighbor getting water from the other well, and how, I think the app, I see the, the other neighbor here, and he's silent, so I, I don't know if he's, um, had any concern, again, I don't know. There was, there was a lot of problems between those two neighbors that we had to wade through.
Um, is there any other discussion?
In this case, this would all be civil matters between the applicant and the new owner, and whether, you know, the water's gonna contin, I guess that's really not our issue, right? If, if he's gonna give the new ap, or the buyer of the existing property, how that's gonna play out with who has water rights and so forth, that's really not our, not anything we're being tasked with, because that was, that was an issue on the, on the last, uh, properties.
Arlene?
I guess I got a question is, uh, that building that's getting remodeled on your current property, Mitch, what's your intention with that?
Well, it's gonna be up to the new owner. I mean, it's currently a garage storage at this point.
It's just gonna be a garage?
Yeah. I don't have any intended use for it.
I see they're still fixing it up, okay.
Mark?
I have a lot of issues with this whole thing. I guess I, I don't understand why we're thinking of, first of all, it's farmland, even though in here, he says it's not tillable and not tilled and everything else. It's ag farmland. Number one. Number two, if he wants to build a house there, he bought the place, tear down the house and build a new house. That's, but that's neither here nor there. Um, we're do, talking about putting a, a house on shoreland. I mean, it's got so many things against it. It's prime soils, yes, it's, doesn't meet the 40% criteria, but it's still, a house will be put right on prime soils. Something we're short of in Winona County. And it's taking more farmland away. And it's not, usually when someone comes here, it's to help out a family member or to get someone else started. I, I just see so many things against it, myself. I think it should, I think it should, this should be more under a, I don't know what you wanna call it.
Permit to build a new house.
Well, not to permit to build a new house, but a, a new division. I mean, a new subdivision. Because, I mean, this isn't the first time it's done it, and, you know, how many times can you do it before you call it a subdivision? Obviously, if you just buy one and split it in two, that's legal, but you can do two.
Figure subdivision regulations.
But that's, that's my concerns. I have a lot of concerns on it, but them are my main ones. Farmland, shoreland, um, on actively tilled soils. You know, it's just, uh, I don't understand it. That's what the rules in the county were for.
Pat?
Uh, Mark has articulated very well my sentiments on that. I mean, he hit it right on the head. And I think of the viability of that acreage there. I think back with meetings over the past years that Commissioner Jacob has mentioned about, you know, that's the heart and soul of Winona County, you know, agriculture. And to take as much tillable land and useful land as we can. So, um, I agree with Mark. I have, I have some issues with that, you know, from the two points that you made before you were finished.
Kelly?
Um, one thing that struck me when I was reading through this was the reference to, um, tillable. Ha, has the soil been tilled? And I checked with Kay, it does read in our ordinance, "Has the soil been tilled within the last 10 years?" But whether it's been tilled or not, and this is kind of off-topic, I'm sorry. But whether it's been tilled or not is not necessarily, um, an indication that it has been farmed, because there are farming practices that don't till. And those are very good, sustainable farming practices, and we want to encourage those. So I'd like to maybe consider making a change to the verbiage in the ordinance so that it, it refers to actively farmed rather than act, um, tilled within the last 10 years. But I, I would also, um, share some of the things you've articulated, both Patrick and Mark, that, um, we get a lot of these applications, and when it's a, when it's a case of, um, and I'm talking about the more than one house on 40 acres. When it's a case of, um, a family member needs medical attention, that's certainly understandable. When it's a fa, family farm, and a member of the family wants to build on the family land, I think that's understandable. But when it's, when it's not necessary like that, I think we need to live within the spirit of, of the comprehensive land use plan and the ordinance, and try to protect ag land.
You done?
Yeah.
Okay. Arlene?
I guess my, my concern is too is the, we're opening a whole can of worms. Okay, there, most of our applicants for another far, another property or house on less than 40 acres has been for farm help or medical. But we're, we're opening a whole can of worms. Somebody's gonna come in down the road and say, "Well, you let that one do it, you let that one do it." How many 40 acres are we gonna start splitting? Ms. Wickram, when she spoke, she was assumed they got their 35 acres, 40 acres. Do they wanna sell off five acres and have somebody build on their house? You know, we're, we're opening a whole can of new worms at this, this one here. My, my personal thought.
Okay, is there any other discussion at this time? Hearing or seeing no evidence of that, where do you wanna go next? Hearing or seeing no evidence of that, where do you want to go next?
Let's go to the findings.
You want to go to the findings? You want to make a motion?
I will make a motion that we deny both permits, applications.
Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Arlene's second. Yeah.
Would that be to, to adopt the findings of fact as written and deny the application based on being protected or not?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. You got that, Annie? Okay. Is there any discussion on this motion? Or further discussion? Seeing none, or hearing none, all of...
Was there a second?
Yeah, Arlene.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
Seeing no further discussion?
That, that's, that's, that would be the end of the meeting then, essentially, right?
Well, it's the end, ending of this docket.
Yes. Okay, maybe I'll offer some discussion, I guess. By and large, I don't think we are opening a new can of worms. I think, I think there's been very few applications that have come before this board, if any, for building on less than forty acres that we've denied. To me, in my recollection, this would be the first time that we've denied somebody an application to build on less than forty acres. So my concern is that we're not singling Mr. Walch out and treating him differently than the population as a whole and our past practices. So I understand the, the farmland, taking farmland out of production, and I don't feel good about that. I feel like we all know that this is farmland, and the applicant said that it's, his words were that it was not tilled, or giving us the flavor that it wasn't farmland. I mean, it is. So that's, that's probably the, the piece that I can't get over, if, if it was, if he just came in and said, "Yeah, it's farmland, and what I want to build on it." I think we've done that plenty of times. I think we've, I think, I think just about all of them that we've done have been that way, so. I don't know, I could, I could, I'll probably vote with, with the majority on the issue. But I, I feel like, you know, there should be some discussion on it before we just...
Counsel?
Application.
Does the findings of fact listed in there, do they justify the motion?
Based on the discussion that's been had about the reserves raised, which related to the criteria that were not met, as long as you're saying that those are the most important things that outweigh the other criteria, then yes, that would be sufficient.
Does that answer your question, Steve?
I think so.
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
I guess I'd just like to add to what Steve said. And I haven't, I've been on the board, I don't know, the commission, three years or something, I don't know. So I haven't been on it that long. But I don't recall one of these that wasn't either farm help.
Oh, yeah, there has been.
In the last three years?
I think so.
I don't recall one.
We've done more building on less than forty acres than any other application.
Yes, we have. There's one every, every week.
This would be the first one that I remember denying.
Well, and I don't, but I don't recall one that, that I've been involved in that wasn't either farm help, medical necessity, or a family.
Yeah, I'm guessing...
I think that's how it's different.
I think the one that we're gonna, that I'm gonna discuss from our last meeting was Mr. Ritter, was that, was he...
That was his son, yeah.
All right. But yeah, it, it, there's definitely been development outside of farming and family.
I'm sure there has in Winona County, but since I've been here, I don't recall approving one that was...
Staff would probably know better than I, but...
Okay. At this time, unless there's further discussion, Annie, would you read the motion? Or Stephanie?
Motion to adopt the findings of fact and recommend denial of the condition of these cases.
Okay. Does everybody understand what we're voting on? Okay. All those in favor of, of motion as stated recommending a denial of the CUP, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Most, the petition has been unanimously denied.
No, the petition has been recommended to be denied.
Okay, it's been recommended to be denied. I'm sorry.
Still has the opportunity to talk, to come to the county board.
Okay.
Tonight's only recommendation, it's not...
All right.
It's not, it's not the approval or denial.
That's right.
There any other clarifications? We have no board of adjustment. Um, county board update, Steve?
Uh, yeah, we, we approved the Ritter application, so...
Okay. At...
Was that, and that was the only one at the last meeting, correct? Yeah.
At this time, I'm going to take it upon myself to bring up a topic that I think needs immediate attention of probably both the county board and the planning commission, and that is, we are getting, particularly in one area in this county, a tremendous influx of solar farm applications. And here again, personally, I have no problem with a solar farm on non-ag land, but I think we've overdone this, and so I would like to see if there's something that planning and zoning can recommend where we can maybe get out of this tunnel without too much damage to either side. Kay?
Mr. Chair, as, as per the, the planning commission, we went back, did some additional research comparing what other counties were doing, talked to operators, got input on some draft language to return the solar ordinance for review, because that was on the county board's list. We didn't forget about it, and we certainly didn't forget about what some counties are doing in terms of density restrictions and limitations. A lot of, you know, why we are seeing things crop up in certain areas is Excel Energy's line capacity, and them saying, "Hey, we've got still some capacity for some more one-megawatt systems." So it's not accidental that they're sort of clustered in certain areas. But there are a bunch of new, you know, pieces of information from other counties that are struggling with some of the same kind of things that we are. And so we did a review of that today, and that was something that there isn't specific language about, but that could be explored prior to coming before this body in June.
June?
Do we have to hold your feet to the fire to get you to bring it to the body in June?
Absolutely not. It's already on the agenda.
Okay. Annie and Stephanie, I saw you got that recorded.
I have a, I have a question, just kind of related. Would it be possible to also change tillable to farmed at that time?
And fertilized, that doesn't make sense. Not everyone fertilizes their farmland.
Fertilized doesn't have anything to do with that.
That's just the applicant's comment.
Right. Just the applicant's comment, okay.
Is that something we could consider doing at the same time, since we're making a change to the ordinance, or, I mean...
We have a lot of no-till farmers in the county.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, and Commissioner Jacob, and, and planning commission members, and there are certainly other things in the zoning ordinance that could stand some tweaking. Typically, we can give, give a list of things to work on by the county board, but a lot of those are larger, broad brush stroke kinds of things, and it could be the kind of thing like in a work session, that we have some cleanup things that make sense, that may make the job of the planning commission easier and more straightforward as they bring it, recommendations board to the county board. And we can certainly ask the county board, you know, here's a couple of things that we think, in sort of a sooner matter than later list, if that makes sense. Because we are having a work session, you know, coming up in July, and, you know, maybe we can add on a couple of things like that, saying, you know, if you want to bring this forward in our request for board action for a couple of minor tweaks to some things like that. That one specifically, to more update it, to reflect current practices such as, you know, no-till, and a couple of props that Commissioner Jacob just referred to.
Commissioner Jacobs, is that something that you'd be willing to bring up with the board as well, just to get, see what they're thinking is on that?
So we need the county board to direct the planning commission, or can't the planning commission come up with their own?
Yeah, you can as well. Just the last list that I've received had sort of priorities from the board, so if it's okay to insert something in that list ahead of those priorities, we certainly could do that.
Yeah, it, the zoning ordinance in the, well, not the county's zoning ordinance, is pretty much forever being modified.
Yeah. And we try to do that, so that it stays with...
Updated, or... And, and we did go through quite a comprehensive list of what we got on our own first of the year, last year, I think, that we worked out for more than a year. So, yeah, I think, yeah, I think we should, I think we should continue to move forward on those items. So it sounds like the planning department probably has quite a few more items than the planning commission has, and you're saying marry them all together.
Right, and some of the larger things, so it could be cleanup plus some tweaks like this.
Mr. Chair, would I need to make a motion? Would we need to pass a motion in order to make that recommendation, or is that, is this something you could...
I think with a discussion at this point, we can talk about it then in June, about any other cleanup items we might want to include. We don't want to actually initiate an ordinance amendment at this point, because that triggers timelines. So we'll have some discussion in June about ordinance amendments, starting with solar and...
Okay.
Okay. Okay, and my comment to this whole discussion is, let's all be pulling in the same direction. That, that's the only way you get something done. Is there any other business that should become before this planning commission meeting?
Move to adjourn.
Hold it.
Oh, sorry.
You have a question?
Can I just make a comment that, so we changed anybody's decision, but I just wanted to clarify that I'm actually the one who wrote, so, like, I actually typed out our findings in the meeting, and so I just wanted to clarify that I was not being deceitful in saying that there was none, that it was non-tillable land. If you, and I'm guessing we're looking at number six, if anybody wanted to know what I'm looking at. I just wrote that it's not actively tilled, and it hasn't been actively fertilized. So I never said it wasn't tillable land, and I just wanted to make sure that was clear. And I wasn't trying to come in like, "This isn't tillable, we're gonna, you know, we're trying to fill out this." So I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you. All right. You were used, ready to speak again?
I, I was going to move that we adjourn.
Second.
Kelly moved to adjourn, and Mark seconded it. All those in favor of adjourned the main meeting of the Winona County Planning Commission, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. The meeting is now adjourned. I thank you all for your attendance. Members of the planning commission, I thank you for your diligence...